Some people don't know how we fight. We are very, very consistent. We don't stop. We will never, ever stop until we accomplish our goal. That goal is to disgrace and unmask Jupri in public. And we are not going to stop until we do it. I told some of you before, in 2014, if you can, some of you can remember, that our passport to be a free freedom is the reign of Buhari. Did I say that or not? Did I say that or not? When the tribunal said, that Jupri without certificate now affidavit is your president, I knew that Jupo Vika Biam is with us. Because we are going to keep fighting these people until they willingly give up Biafra to us. It doesn't matter how many they kill, how many they arrest illegally, today they call us terrorists, tomorrow they call us whatever they like. One thing is certain, that Biafra must come. Biafra must come. Biafra must come. When you are at the center of this very movement, you encounter a lot of difficulties and problems. It comes with the tragedy. There is nothing, I repeat, there is nothing that will stop this very movement. Some of them, some of them, mandena kwa se. Mande, fulanenazha handi. Now they claim they don't, they don't understand what we are doing. Is there any child anywhere in the world born to a Biafran who doesn't know what IPOB is doing? Our mission is to restore Biafra. Tell all those Afulefu's that don't know that here in Geneva tonight, our mission is very simple, to restore Biafra or we die restoring Biafra. He can no longer claim he doesn't know what we are doing. Because tonight we told him, our enemies will come, they will try to ridicule what you're doing. When they said that to you, you tell them that we have been divinely mandated to restore Biafra. That is why we are born. That is why we exist. And that is why Biafra must come. Some of you here may grow tired. Some of you may fall by the wayside. Some of you may allow evil spirits to get into you. But none of that will stop the coming of Biafra. We have achieved something that our enemies thought was not achievable. Before we started IPOB, how many of you here knew each other?
Very few.
But today we are brothers and sisters dedicated to one very divine assignment from heaven. And that assignment is to restore Biafra. And that is exactly what we're going to do, all of us. Is Geneva our land? Are we from Switzerland? Where do we come from? Where do we come from? Where are we going back? IPOB! 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 One family!
Ikoo, I make a note. For the time you all have brought out to be here to welcome our leader. IPOB in Switzerland and of course IPOB in Geneva. And all over the world where you came in today, we welcome you and we thank you. I wouldn't know if there is anybody who has a question for our leader. Not too many questions. Maybe a few questions and then we can...
The word.
We have a, we have a lady here. She requested to, she requested to be given attention. So let me give her for the microphone.
Please.
Okay. Okay. Please, to, to, to her, yeah. And my brother, please you, you get back a little bit.
I may not speak good English again, but I came out here four years after Biafra. And I studied. So Mwembong, when he came out at the, the broken gate, what you call it, the broken fear, I managed to pass a poem to you. And that poem, I wrote it when I was very, maybe nineteen, twenty years old. You saw the death. So when Oduku was dying in the UK, I faxed it to him. And the senior medical officer taking care of him promised to read it to him since he was not seeing again. So those are the poems I kept. And I've never published them. I wanted to publish them before he was a man, he died, you know. I can't remember because I forget things. So what I'm going to say again, apart from that poem, you read it, you can publish it, you can put it anywhere. I retired from the UN. And when Biafra was there, another poem I wrote was that our name means birth was inevitable. Amid fury and re-duplicated atrocities, they are here. So that is Biafra. It's one of the poems I wrote. I don't know if I will ever publish them. So I'm very grateful for what you are doing. The only thing again I have to say is that they created the five states and then it cut all of us into pieces. You would ask me, what are you from? When I came out here, it was called Eastern Nigeria. So I don't care. I know who I come from, but I don't tell any of you. Except few people in the UN who know. So it's not necessary that we divide ourselves further, further, further than they have cut us into five pieces. And then I'm asking all of you, I went home for the first time in ten years in May. And then I was told they were building a mosque in Oweri. And then in Abakaleke, the governor gave some lands for them to build a Muslim school. So where, if the Osama sees behind your bedroom, how can you say you're Ibo? So all of you who saw when the Malam went to see the, what you call the Archbishop of Katalbri, why don't you write him a letter to ask Buhari to stop implanting their mosque etc., etc. in Ibo land? Because even if we are going to be free tomorrow, how are you going to chase them away? They already there. They are killing people in Edo, everywhere they go. And then they say carry their marchette. So what are we doing? Where are your governors? What are they doing? Says, "Sir, I want that human rights, but I can't because that, I worked with all the, you know, jurist, international, all those lawyers. I was assisting them. My French is perfect." Then, this is the thing, so Nandi, I'm very grateful God has appointed you. I'm a poet.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
Keep the hand here and then let's have one go.
Thank you, Madam, but you give us a favor, Madam. You join us here in IPOB in Geneva. That will be a great thing for you.
Thank you very, very much. It's a very good thing that you spoke first this evening. Because I read somewhere that one of those Afulefu's responsible for bringing Fulani husband into our land to settle, to settle. They said that we are their sons and daughters. That tells you how bad things have become. When those, you're older than, will turn around and say you are their sons and their daughters because they are enjoying the benefits of high office, courtesy of the patronage of a badly educated Fulani man. She said something here. Some of you may have picked a fight with us when I told you that your governors were evil. Some of you didn't realize what I was saying. We should say this way back, that these people you call your leaders, they were handpicked by Fulani men to do a specific job for them. And what is that job? Some of you think that Ruga is not happening. Enugu state is almost gone. Ebon is almost gone. When we travel to the north, we use our money, work very hard to establish your business. We buy land, build factories, build houses, build shopping malls. In our own land, they take our land by force and give it to Fulani headsmen from Mali, from Chad, from Niger. And they appealed their settlements that gave Miethi Alainenugu the impetus to say that they will be touring fourteen Fulani settlements. Some of you didn't read it. Tomorrow, some of you here will invite them to have their age in Switzerland. I have to sound this very warning this evening. If you are in the front today onwards, any bastard living anywhere inviting any governor of Biafran to take our whole nation. Understand this very well. Our land is under siege. You have people that claim that they are Biafrans or Ibo people inviting abroad those responsible for our misery and our shame because you want to share in the money coming from Abuja. I am sure all of you here, you're working. Of course, you know we are miscreants, but we work. If you're not proud, I'm a very proud miscreant. I remember during the war, Second World War, I remember because I read the history books. The allied forces in the north of Africa, Romulus forces, we are called the Desert Foxes, that's the German people. And the allies under the control of General Montgomery was called the Desert Rats. And funny enough, it was a derogatory name to insult them. You know what they did? They went and drew rats on their arm. If you call me a miscreant, I will answer you. But what a miscreant does, you that is reading about Abuja without affidavit, not even Ojuno certificate, can never do it in a middle of the night. Your governors are killing you. They are that route through which the Fulani cabal penetrated our land. Read the newspaper every place that they, you will see what is happening. Some of us will go back home and we'll see that our villages are no longer there. How are you going to put them? How? When we were growing up, we knew Amawasa, where they, they sell their cattle, they sleep there. The next day they enter Bongo and go back to the north. Now they have Fulani villages with round mud houses in Enugu and Ebon. And some people are asking me, why do you want to be a friend? You have Biafra and I know I know that man. A governor is owing salaries. Is any of you here aware of what is happening in Akapoli? They were owing them for sixteen months. See, one, six, and you know what they did? They now turned around and sacked all of them. And asked them to reapply. Then the running deer somewhere would invite him also to come and yell at you somewhere outside. And the person inviting them, the person inviting them gets his own salary every pleasant month or week. But you invite, out of wickedness and evil in you, you are inviting a governor that is owing people. So that governor can come. And a lot of you will share other personalities. I thank Jupo Vika Biam for IPOB. We just reason that way. Money can never move us. There was something I read this morning also from my dear friend, Fermin Fani Karo. Something a Fulani man said. Some of you don't know what is happening back home. You know what they do? They will come to my deputy and they'll promise him Senator President in 2023. They will go to our head and they will say, they'll promise him the same position in 2023. And say to them that in the meantime, make sure that it's Ruga settlement. Make sure to take care of Miethi Alainenugu well. Why do you think they are doing what they are doing in Ebon? They have promised all the governors. Oh, it's your turn in 2023. But you have to prove to us that you're loyal. Show us the good Fulani slave. Make sure there are Fulani settlements in your states. And they come and they lay siege to my house. They arrest elderly women and charge them with terrorism. And the governor is there saying, it's the turn of my family. Who knows, I'll be President in 2023. The same thing they promised to Nubu. And today they have chased out Usubadjo from Asunok. What this tells you is this, that there is something wrong with the way some of us actually reason. And that is why I praise Elohim for IPOB. Fortunately, we don't reason like that. Anybody thinking that Ibo presidency 2023 will stop us, take our whole nation. What we want is Biafra. And what we're going to get is Biafra. There are Ibo people in Benue. Our mother, I come to about Jerimandren, cutting us into five states. They draw their map, you see us very tiny. It's a lie. There are Ibo people in, in those states. Two of us. There are Ibo people in Kogi State. There are Ibo people in Benue. Ibo speaking people in Kusbyva. Do you know that? And you want me to abandon them and go? I said, no, I'll never do it. We shall take all of them with us. And Biafra shall come. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you very much, my dear brother. It's a good thing that I said, one of the good things I like about our people is is that we are very reasonable people. And in many other, that's how I used to say it. It is not everything we do that you expect us to come out in the open details. When Fulani people are planning to bring Ruga, did they come out and announce it? Did they announce it outside? Why must you compel us to announce our countermeasures against them in public? We go to UN, they want us to tell you. So next time, UN will not call us. We go to EU, you want us to announce everything. So next time, they will not call us. We are not a sovereign state. Understand this very well. We are not yet a recognized sovereign state. But due to the work we have done and the grace of the Most High, they are keep asking us to come. Can't you read something into it? Can't you understand it? How many of them before us have never to do this? And they want us to tell you everything. So tomorrow, other nations of the world will say, oh, oh, I'm not here, you can't eat them, you can't cross this. You have no secret, nothing. Allow us to do our job and then people like our brother will do theirs. IPOB! IPOB!
I think I've been saying this even in radio Biafra, but I'm not talking for myself. I always, people say, I can't get the leadership. No, it's not like that. Whatever I say, I say for my beloved brothers. I, for one, I have my paper. I'm coming, I'm, I went to Sweden. I was in Bruges with you. I'm here, I just came in, all of you saw me now. My coordinator is in Landry, in Stockholm. And I come all the way from Warsaw, Poland, Obudogno, Virginia. Ah, Hamadike, please, my brother, thank God you are here. I appreciate all of you. I have question that will help us. I want to ask one thing and I want you to clear this matter, please. Based on what is happening now, you know, when this war comes, eventually, emanate in my telaz, yola. Freedom is not given. It might not be long ago. Because, there those who will go for us, ah, Hamadike, I use example about those of them in Italy. I have my document, I call Radio Biafra, somebody was saying, probably because I don't have, I have documents. So, Mazzi, what is happening in Italy? I want to the leadership of IPOB to look into it. Most of those are people because of what has happened before. Some of them need looking for identification letter to get document. Because we learnt, it's hundred percent sure, they were kind of, you know, our people. The way they handled the matter, the leadership closed it. But I just beg the leadership to see what they can do to please make sure we don't malice those guys. And some of you somewhere that we are having the same problem. We are all Biafrans. That is what I want to say. And Mazzi, my, my memories, the last one is this. I want to Republic of Biafra, possibly the Republic of, the Republic of Biafra, the fato government. We must lodge, Republic of Biafra, the fato government must be logged in to combat sabotools and threeshares and sundas. All these sabotools. Because this is our government, then you have said direct, oh, say something about that. And lastly, to stop all this IPOB Nigeria trial quagmire. You know what I mean? So I want you to deliver a message.
IPOB! I want, it gives me a lot of joy when I hear that governments around the world are recognizing our suffering and our pain and giving us papers. If you're here and you don't have any papers, it's because you are not part of this very humble family. I've said it. Any member of IPOB who is deported from any country around the world, I will remove the national coordinator. It means you don't know what you're doing. In Israel, they give us papers. In Canada, we have papers in the US, in the UK, in Germany. So why shouldn't we give them papers wherever? Are you telling me the countries we are in, they don't know what is happening back home? And today we tell them as well that Biafran refugees are coming. I told them. They will come. And we are entitled to those papers. And we shall make sure that every Biafran is documented wherever they are around the world. Because we are fleeing from danger and existential threat to all of us. If you don't know what to give to the courts, the DOS is there. You can email them direct. They put in the documents, say, "Alwayan." We have them. We have the videos. We have the sworn testimonies. We have the depositions. Let me see any judge that would like to leave under the conditions we are living today. I don't care where the judge comes from. Those in Italy will be sorted. And sometimes I say to the leadership of IPOB, we may help one hundred people get their papers and then we will decide very foolish. We are not going to punish ninety people because of wayward sentencing. We can't do that. IPOB!
IPOB! Actually, I want to talk concerning our Hares and Leo and all the Ibo men in Angwell. First of all, my name is Mike Eryfi. Sir, Mazzi and Ken, we are the one that took you last time you were here to the airport when you was at Geshi House, Greshi House. So once again, you are welcome to Geneva. So I just want to refer to the people that are putting us into the station we are right now. Niamoodo and Rocha, Sokorocha, and the rest of them, all those on to Uncle Tom. They are, they believe that maybe trying to help the Fulanis to target us terrorists with, with undermining what we are doing. But actually, it resulted that we are still moving. Okay. Niamoodo, I want to refer to you as Ibo chairman, as you used to be called. In our state or in the eastern state, we have our, our sisters. Most of them, they are young girls that are being selling their children. We have social vice going on in east. We have kidnappers. We have a banditry. We have the Fulanis, the, the Fulani jihadis in the east, raping our mothers, destroying our farmers. And then they have just almost And then they have shot almost all the young Ibo youth outside. Most of the Ibo youth are outside, most of them are in prison, most of them are being in some deadly countries like Libya, Saudi, they are facing death penalty. All sorts of things, someone in the Mediterranean Sea, they are dying, even right now, I'm talking, most of them are dying. Niamod, what have you done with your Hares and Lee with groups? What have you done to help your people? Over 50 years after the civil war, our people are still facing the same problems that, uh, resulted to the civil war, where we lost 3.5 million people. Now we have someone like Mazinandikan, which you're supposed to be happy, maybe celebrating like becoming a Jesus Christ. Maybe some people will say, "Ah, you comparing Nandika to Jesus." Yes, of course, I compare him to Jesus, because anybody who really want to help you, who really want to help in a difficult situation, that person is the Jesus that you see. Mazinandikan, actually, he, he never came to ask for any favor from government or ministerial appointment or governance of appointment or to lead PDP or NPC or NMC, whatever. But he has come to deliver your stupidity, your degradation, your poverty, all the things that you people have, have been facing in the hand of the Fulanis. But yet, you people didn't appreciate this man. Instead, you can never, you can never with the Fulanis to come and kill a blessed man, somebody that God have given us, to serve us in this situation. So I will advise you, my, um, 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 Niamod. Wherever you are, I know that you will listen because I'm, I'm a miscreant, I'm a proud miscreant. So I know that you will not see my, uh, my video on Facebook if I make a video. So I use this opportunity to make this video. I know Niamod, Niamod, you will see me. Rocha Sokorocha, you will see me. So you people, if you know that you have the, the, the power to lead Ibo people out of this problem, out of jungle, out of Nazi camp called Nigeria. You lead and we, we see that you are building wealth, we will come, we will follow you. But if you can, shut up your mouth and join Nandikan, join the few that will achieve Biafran. We will achieve Biafran. Biafran is here. IPOB.
They want to, uh, leaders to show them our Hares and Lee. They can't do anything. They were appointed by Fulani people. They came to destroy our land. And we have come to restore it. You know, they have no shame. The Fulani governors will go into the bush, into the forest to go and take money to kidnappers and rapists. Fulani governors will give money to Boko Haram, the terrorist group. Give money to Mieti Yala, a terrorist group. How much do they give to Mieti Yala? How many? I'm getting billion? 100 billion. These are northern governors, paying killers. But where we come from, those of us protesting our land against these foreign invaders. Your own governors are conniving with their military to come and kill you. And somebody will invite that governor abroad. I want you to understand the depth of the wickedness in some people. If not for IPOB by now, our land would have been gone. But they are still fighting us. Imagine what we could have achieved if they were with us. By now would have been gone. But what concerns them is their tenure in office. That allocation from Abuja that they're eating with their friends. That's what matters to them. They, they say they're intellectuals, we are a man. They say we are miscreants and they are intellectuals, the elite. That's what they say, isn't it? And I'm sure the U N is filled with elites. Is that not correct? What stops them from doing what I'm doing today? Ask yourself that question. Ever, Niamod, the camera IPOB in Aga, why are you not able to go there? Because they don't have it in them. Because they are not educated enough. Because they are not patriotic enough. Because these people have come to sound the Fulanis. That is why we are in a mess today. Our brother spoke earlier, we are paying at the Mediterranean Sea. Our brothers are being raped. And Ibo governor will stand up and say, "Oh, it's a shame, a, a pregnant woman was raped today." All my life, I never had such a book nation, until now. And the same Fulanis are just living nearby. But the same, they call, pardon, dance seven on us. Some of you foolishly call them your governors. They are your death sentence. I say, "Rest, they are your death sentence." I'm not excuse you, never invite them, these are our governors, they are our leaders. You people should wake up and wise up now. Wake up and wise up now. We have banned them from traveling abroad. They can speak out, oh, you can speak out and speak in, that's your business. Every day is for the taking. One day will catch up the Zibas, just one day. IPOB.